Welcome Lowell to our second Candidates Forum for the Lowell School Committee. My name is Jim Campanini, editor of The Sun. This one-hour program is being brought to you in collaboration with Lowell Telecommunications Corps, our partners in this endeavor. This evening, as I said, this program will begin and will last for one hour. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to a question. There will be rebuttal if necessary. I'm now going to turn over the program to the moderator of this panel, Chris Scott, the enterprise editor at The Sun. Chris, take it away.
Thank you, Jim. I'd like to introduce the candidates this evening. To my left is Tim Blake, one of the challengers, and then followed up by two incumbents, Andy Decotto and Connie Martin. And then we have two more challengers, Dominic Lay and Dennis Mercier. If you guys tuned into the first debate, I think you did, would like to try to mix it up a little bit, and if you guys have a desire to respond to what someone else said, just give me a nod and we'll try to do that. So without further ado, we'll get right to the questions, okay? There's been a big issue out there. I'm not sure if anyone's aware of it about the new high school, about building a new high school or renovating the one downtown. So I have a two-pronged question to all of you. Where do you stand on this issue? Do you prefer the downtown getting rebuilt in some fashion? And the second part of that question is this, and it's an important one, so please make sure you hit it. There's also a referendum on the ballot on November 7th that will give some guidance as to whether the city should renovate downtown or build a Colley. So I want you to, the question on that is, will you follow the wish of the referendum, the outcome of the referendum, regardless of how you might feel personally about the high school? Got it?
Got it.
All right, so Tim, why don't you take it?
So in terms of the high school, I've been, I was involved as a parent one before I was running for school committee and started attending public meetings. For the public meetings in December, there was one in the, I think it was the Irish Auditorium at the high school. Really from that point forward, I was a new construction ops person, so I favor the high school being a calling. I think there would be less disruption for kids, maybe a safer environment for kids, and there'd be more security there. Now, in terms of looking at the referendum, I think one of the confusing parts for the referendum, I know from walking through the city and knocking on doors and talking to people, is people are really confused about the referendum, so I'm not sure if the referendum provides enough clarity for the people of the city. I know it's confusing, I know it's long. So if I was to serve on the school committee, I think that would be my first concern with the referendum and the results of it, is it's confusing for people.
So it sounds like you'll stick with Colley regardless of what the results of the referendum.
Like I said, I've been a new construction person right from the get-go, so I'm in favor of calling for those three reasons I just mentioned.
Okay, thank you, Tim. Andy Decotto.
Hi. Well, originally when I ran for school committee two years ago, I was a pro-downtown person. For all of the same reasons that the downtown proponents want to keep it there, central location and all of that. I have come to change my opinion on that in terms of security and the safety of our kids, and to get a state-of-the-art 21st-century building that we can finally have our kids compete with the rest of the world out there. In terms of the referendum, I agree with Tim to a certain extent that it's confusing to some people in terms of the verbiage and how they phrase the referendum, but people don't understand that the question is just asking you, do you favor renovating the downtown? That's really the short summarized version. Do you, you know, do you support just renovating and putting new construction at the downtown site? That's what that referendum question is. It's not whether you can, you know, do anything with Colley, has nothing whatever to do with Colley in terms of...
So it sounds like you think it only presents one side.
It only presents one side. It really does.
Tim, you're great.
And it's a non-binding referendum, so, you know, depending on how that vote goes, I don't know if... First of all, I think we have to support whichever way we go with it. If the city council changes and it ends up having to stay downtown, I'm going to support that. I will support that, only because our kids need to get what the state is offering to us. We can't lose that, because we're in bad shape right now, and the only way that we can solve this, at least for the, for a short period, is getting that done. But my preference is definitely Colley.
Just for clarity, you mentioned if the city council changes, you mean if pro-downtown candidates are elected on November 7th?
If it changes to a pro-downtown, yes.
Got you. Okay. Connie Martin.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You know, again, having gone through this process over several years, and it's been going on for quite a long time, even beyond these last year and a half, two years, I am a supporter of the downtown location and have been for quite a while. I've seen the presentations, I've looked at the backup documentation that's been prepared, and for me, I still find downtown the most compelling choice for our community. The central location is a physical benefit, certainly, to have our high school located centrally within our city, but it also has a more kind of figurative strength for us. Many people may know I work downtown at Community Teamwork for a nonprofit organization. That certainly informs my decision. I see how important it is for our high school students to be connected, to be connected with, whether it's Middlesex at one end of the street and the university at the other, whether it's with nonprofits like Community Teamwork, Girls Inc., Boys and Girls Club, UTEC, all these different programs that have really grown up in proximity to the high school, so that we do have that kind of concentrated area of service for our students. So for me, I find that to be the most compelling aspect of it, and I think that you can look at what the overall renovation and rebuild plan is for downtown and see that we will get an extraordinary building for our students where they can be successful, and that will do justice to our city and to the vision we have for its future.
And the second part?
Looking at the referendum, I understand it's a little confusing. Here in Massachusetts, we vote on referendums all the time. They are always worded that way. I can't tell you why, but that's the way they always are with kind of these long meandering sentences. But I have to tell you, from my perspective, I believe that people will understand it, and I believe that they will vote how they feel, and if it was an overwhelming choice to move to Colley, I would reconsider my position. I really do think that, and I've said it many times, there's no moral high ground in this conversation. Both of these options are extraordinary for our city, and at the end of the day, we need a new building to be able to provide the level of education that our students require. And I would not, you know, be in a position where if Colley was the overwhelming preference that I would fight against that. It's far more important to me that we make the investment in education, and while I certainly prefer the downtown location, you know, again, there are worse things in the world than a Colley location, and that's having nothing, just to finish that thought.
All set. Thank you, Connie.
There you go.
Dominic Lay, you have the floor.
Yeah, I took a little time to see which side is better, whether Colley or downtown. I was originally sold on South Common, and I was upset to see it gone so fast because of some reason. And now I had to choose between, for the two choices that we have, between downtown and Colley. I did some, after doing some investigations, go to the meetings and ask questions, I did not find any much differences between educational level between Colley's or downtown. Naturalized, you got both locations clustering, not much advantage from Colley or downtown or downtown or Colley. It came down to a brand-new building or a centralized location, to my decision. And I think a centralized location set a little bit more advantage. And Colley, after you find, after I found out more and more about it, I think there are so many problems with that location that may pose a problem too. So for me, the easy access to education from everybody equally, from every corner of the neighborhoods is more important. So therefore, for the two choices that we have currently, I would prefer downtown.
And then what about the second part of that question, Dominic?
Oh yeah, the referendum. The referendum, I think, because it is non-binding, I think it is a litmus test from the people to say where they want it to be, and I think if the people decided one way or the other, I should support that.
So you'd be like Connie Martin?
I would.
Yeah?
Yeah, I would support that, even though it's non-binding.
Okay. All set?
All set.
Dennis?
Okay, I ran for office, I ran for the school committee two years ago, and I really didn't take a position on the high school location. I know at one point I did say I would favor downtown, but I was going to wait for the feasibility study, the education plan, the final plans, and they did their due diligence. There was a lot of meetings and stuff like that. At the end of it, I decided that I thought Colley was the place to go, a brand-new school. Right now, they're running around three buildings downtown. I just didn't see that as a good environment. And I'll fall back a little on that, because I was at the old trade school as a cop at the, for two years I was at the trade school, and then they moved this up to the vocational school. And I got to tell you, you go from the trade school back then, it's probably not even any better now, I haven't been in it in a while, though, and then you walk into the vocational school, and it was unbelievable, and you could actually see it in everybody. You actually wanted to go to school. And like I mentioned to Chris at one time, the hottest part then was you couldn't just walk out and go hang around downtown if you wanted to skip a class, because you were kind of out there. But that's one of the reasons, and I think it's a good location, it's all on one campus, and I just feel that that's the best place for it to be, and it's time to move out of downtown. As far as the referendum question, I think it's misleading. I don't think we're going to get a true thing of what the people are voting for, because I think they are going to be confused. It's always pointed to, hey, you want to renovate the high school? People are going to be sitting going, well, yeah, yeah, you want to renovate, let's renovate. Some people aren't as informed, although this is a big issue, they're not going to know anything about Colley or any of the other options. So I think it would have to be, you'd really have to look at it and see, and also which neighborhoods are controlling that referendum. If you have one neighborhood that's saying 40% of it, and we know the neighborhood doesn't want it, we understand that, but if there's 40% of that vote is because of one neighborhood, that's not a true referendum. They want to do something, they should do a binding question and let the people decide right out.
There's definitely some contrasting opinions on the referendum. Anyone want to pick up on that, or we good?
Good.
Okay. Let's move on to diversity, and this is, we started with this question with the other panel. According to state data for the 2016-17 school year, 67% of Lowell Public School students are minorities, and yet 97% of the teaching staff and administration is white. This is one of the largest classroom ethnicity gaps in the entire state. Are minority students being disadvantaged? Andy?
Well, in order to answer that question, I think you have to understand where education is right now in terms of how many of our high school graduates are opting to go into education as a profession? And that number is dwindling by the day, dwindling to the point where I think we're going to have a crisis within the next 10 years of a short teacher shortage across the board. And so when you look at those numbers, and then you look at minority students who are possibly thinking about what to do for a career, I think you're going to also find that those numbers are shrinking, shrinking, and shrinking. I know that once you go south of the Mason-Dixon line and you try to bring somebody up to Massachusetts that have these winters that are just, could be pretty nasty, why would you, why would you move away from the warm climate to come up here for a small salary, comparatively speaking? Like, let's just say, so let's just say Tim and I were graduating at the same time, and we were going to go off to college, and he was going to major in plastic engineering, plastics, and I wanted to become a teacher. Now, we're both going to go to the same school, we're both going to have the same kind of tuition bills, same student loans, and we're going to graduate, and he's going to get a job, I'm going to get my teaching position that'll probably be close to about half of what he's going to earn, but our bills are going to still be the same, I'm still going to have to pay my student loan, I want to buy a car, I'd like to get married, I'd like to buy a house, can't do that. That's what makes it a lot more difficult. So why would I go into education when other options are out there that I could make more money for the same time spent and money spent? So it becomes a difficult situation. In Lowell, I think, I know our colleagues spoke this earlier, that in Lowell, we have set up a program to bring in our Paris and to take courses at Middlesex and UMass Lowell to become teachers, and then we can keep these, that diversified population that already lives here and keep them in here. So I think that's a great way to do it. I think we're trying to get that diversity is going to be difficult.
All good information, but just quickly, do you feel those minority students are being disadvantaged? I'm not sure you touched on that.
No, I don't think we are disadvantaging them. I think we have a tremendous staff in this city, doing tremendous work in a very difficult situation.
Okay.
And so I think that when we hire people, we hire the best that we can possibly get. And so therefore, I don't think we're disadvantaging them at all.
Okay, all right. You had a little extra time there, but that's all right. Connie, take a shot at that.
You know, I think at the end of the day, every hiring decision that gets made in the Lowell Public Schools has to be based on the criteria of getting the best, most talented, qualified person into every single position, no matter what. I think as you're looking at the kind of portfolio of a candidate as they sit in front of you, having a diverse background, having a similar cultural experience as some of our students, that's one of the things that weighs in their favor. But again, it's part of the whole balancing act of, you know, you're comparing education levels and experience and licensure and all the different things that go into making a great teacher, because that's what we need in every classroom here in the city. So I think that, you know, I think it's really important that we are focused on increasing diversity, and I see it at all levels of education, including when you're looking at preschool-level education, straight through as you're looking at, you know, high school and beyond. Diversity needs to be something that we keep a focus on, because I think it does benefit our students to have people, you know, in front of a classroom and running a school who have similar experiences to them. I don't think it is the be-all and end-all, though. So I do think that it's important that, you know, the investments really do need to be made in our current kind of incumbent workforce, so that if you're taking a paraprofessional who's in Lowell, you know, family is in Lowell, committed to Lowell, you can take that person through the educational process, and then you have an extraordinary teacher in front of a classroom who understands the community, understands the students, and has the high level of training and education required to do the job. And I always think it's kind of the old fish-in-a-barrel concept. You've got people here in our community who care about it, who want to be part of it and want to make it better. Make those investments. Talk to, whether it's high school students or students at Middlesex, the university, talk to them about what teaching really is. I mean, for the person who's comparing plastics and education, you know, the graduate was right all those years ago, the future is plastics, but I think that you can really light a fire in a student to make them part of the solution.
Again, like your colleague, good information, but are those minority students being disadvantaged?
I don't think it's, I would agree with Andy. I don't think they're disadvantaged, because the role is to get the best, most qualified person in every classroom, in every position, and that's part of the formula, but it's not the entire formula.
Got you, okay. Dominic?
Yeah, you know, I don't believe that not having a diverse staff poses any disadvantage. However, I believe that if we have diverse staff, it will set a nice, very good role models for the next generations. I don't know how many, how many percentage of students that graduate actually went to education, those minority I'm talking about. Maybe, I'm not sure, but maybe they look up and they don't see anyone being a teacher. They look up and they see that, you know, being a doctor, being a lawyer, being an engineer, being a, some electrician, maybe that's, or hairdresser, are better for them. So if we could attract more diverse staff right now, or more minority staff right now, maybe it is a trend for those kids to go and maybe invest themselves in education.
Okay.
Actually, there's points of, all of you have said that I agree with. I don't think the kids are being disadvantaged, I think the teachers are professionals, that, you know, they're doing their job. I don't think they're looking at the diversity in the room. I think as long as the school department is doing their due diligence in recruiting people, it'd be interesting to see how many applications of the different cultures are, and then see what they're hiring from. If it's the same amount across the board and they're not hiring from that, then it's something you should look at. I think as, I think it was Andrew or Connie said, that if they're not applying for the jobs, then there's no way of hiring them. As long as we're doing our due diligence, doing the recruitment, I think that's good. And like I said, I don't think any of the teachers we have, they're all professionals, I don't think they're disadvantaging the kids at all.
Okay. And Tim?
So to start, so you don't have to ask a follow-up, start with a no, but let me give you a quick story from my experience as a school principal. I was a brand-new principal at Leamester. I was meeting with a parent, this is six years ago, and talking with the parent, kid made a mistake, we're working with middle-school kids, they make lots of mistakes, and when I was done, the parent was kind enough and said, listen, there's something at play here you don't understand, and I think this is what you're getting to a little bit in your question, is that our community doesn't feel welcome in your school. And that was heart-wrenching, and I was a brand-new principal, and I figured, you know, how do I need to solve this? I won't give you the whole long story, but part of it, I think, is what you're getting to, is we made a concerted effort to try to bring in minority candidates and try to have people in our school that kids and families felt comfortable with. I still remember the day when I hired a secretary who spoke Spanish, of going to the cafeteria and saying, raise your hand if someone in your house speaks Spanish, just one person. And for where I worked, that was a ton of kids. That secretary was a rock star. In like hours, she couldn't believe it. And I think that's, again, to the heart of your question, in my experience, I've been able to hire a secretary, I've been able to hire a parent liaison, I've been able to hire teachers that are from Puerto Rico, and I have another teacher from the Dominican Republic, and it makes a huge difference in the kids' lives, and it makes it a more inclusive environment, and it makes it an environment that families want to come to, and it just makes it an all-around better educational environment, and it's not done through a lot of effort and hard work.
So do you, based on that story, what about the disadvantage?
I think it would be unfair to say disadvantaged, however, I do think it's the responsibility. I mean, think of what I said, I sat with that parent, and she said, I don't feel welcome here. And I could have looked at my stats, which might have not, at that time, been not too different from the stats that you're talking about in Lowell, and said, I need to do something about this, so the kid that's in, you know, next year, two years from now, doesn't have a mom that comes in and says that same exact thing to me, because if that happens, shame on me. And we worked real hard to make sure that wouldn't happen.
Okay. Dominic, did you raise your hand?
Yes, and I do want to add to that also, that yes, if there are a few minority staff or teachers in the school, those minority students, they will feel comfortable for that class, for those classes, and for that school. So I believe having diverse staffs in the schools, it will help make the students feel more comfortable, maybe more at home. In that sense, I agree with you, Tim.
We want to make sure the school environment, hopefully that was okay, is one that families feel comfortable. I mean, you know, in my school, in my experience, we do a home visit program where teachers will go, especially with our minority students, English, the second language students, go into the kids' homes, so they feel more comfortable, because then that way, you've got families that will feel comfortable. Think of the story I said, that secretary was a rock star, okay? And then all of a sudden, those families knew when they went to that school, there was someone that they could talk to, and they would feel comfortable, and it just creates such a different relationship between the community and the school.
I'd like to add to what, something that Dominic had to say. When I first started at Lowell High School, I can remember having mostly white kids that were the carryover from the previous administration. And I started to attract other kids, and there was with this one Asian boy who came in, and he admitted to me two years later that he was the, he was doing reconnaissance for his friends to see what kind of teacher I was in terms of welcoming. Well, long story short, I ended up with an influx of Asian kids that were just amazing kids.
So you must have been welcoming.
I definitely was welcoming. But I think that's really more the norm in our city in terms of, at the high school at least, and I have experience at the elementary school as well, very welcoming and very, very open to diversity.
Anybody else on diversity? All right, so this is a good question to stay with, and incumbent Connie, this is, we'll start with you. Refresh our memory and the minds of our viewers, how did you vote on the superintendent's contract? And tell us why you voted that way, and then you can, then we'll just go down the line, and whether he's deserving of a contract.
I had voted against the contract. It was a fairly long and, dare I say, torturous process to get to a contract.
Those are strong words, torturous.
It took a long time. You know, for me, the key things that really kept me from supporting the contract were it had built-in raises with no performance standards built into it, and the length of the contract. So those were two key elements that, as we were having our conversations as a committee, I had raised, and so that just kept me from being able to support moving forward with the contract. In general, I do support contracts for superintendents and for the assistant superintendents. I do think that's always been the norm here in Lowell for our school staff, and I've always supported that. So it's not a, you know, it's not a knee-jerk reaction of saying I don't like contracts. I think contracts serve a very real purpose, but this was, you know, it was the content within this one that I wasn't able to, that I wasn't able to support.
Thank you.
For this particular contract, well, he came in, he came in to take over a school system with top two leaders left, gone. So it was a little bit tough for him from what I saw, from what I've seen, and for the contract, I, after almost two years working in the position, I think that he deserved to have a contract, because what's the point of having him if you don't trust him? Why don't you just fire him and have another guy if you don't want to give him a contract? So I would support to give him a contract. I didn't know much the detail about, you know, with our contract, I think it's very difficult for somebody like a superintendent to have a vision to, you know, I would think that in that position, you probably need three or four, three to five years to work on the project until you see the result come out of your work. So I support the contract, but, you know, like, the details, I don't know, I didn't know the details. And the salary, when I saw the jump from $150,000 and some change to $180-something, some change, I thought that was a big jump.
Those numbers are correct, Connie, correct?
Well, I think we had started, when he first came on, he was at $180, and then this last, the contract brought him up to like $190.
Oh.
Not to interrupt, just get the numbers up there, okay?
It was the assistant superintendent that came to the $150.
Okay. So when I saw that, which was the wrong number, I thought that was a big jump, anyway.
Okay. All set?
All set.
Okay, Dennis?
I would have, I wouldn't have not voted for this contract. I think it's too long for one, as Connie said. I think it's a very generous contract. I believe in the contracts, I don't think they should go over three years, there should be something there, they're doing evaluation every year, there isn't. I think the contract's good for the superintendent. I don't think it's good for the city. I think the superintendent did a great job in negotiating, because, you know, he even gets a, my understanding from reading it, he gets a half a day on Fridays before a holiday, which I have never seen in any contract that I've ever looked at anywhere. But I just think it was, it was too much money. At the end of his contract, I think he's going to be making $205,000 a year. You know, that's just a lot of money. I understand education is expensive, I think they've got to tone it down, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was just a one-on-one negotiations until the final contract between the mayor and the superintendent.
It was a complicated, the mayor had led the effort and had had several, went through several sessions with the superintendent and his representative, and would kind of come back to the committee to present things. We would voice concerns and make recommendations and make requests, and then he'd go back, and so it went on for quite a while, and it was somewhat confusing.
I understand, you can't, you can't be sitting negotiating against seven people. I think it should have been more than one, maybe two members of the board, or even three, a little give and take, and I just, I think he's doing an okay job and everything, I just don't think that the contract's advantageous to the city or the taxpayers.
Thank you, Dennis. Tim?
So my experience, you know, teachers are evaluated, paraprofessionals, tutors, everybody in the school system is evaluated, so I would be in support of a contract that has performance standards, just like we have for other staff members. I think that's one important thing. I do think, though, sometimes we underestimate it's important to have a superintendent with a contract. I'm going to speak from my experience as a principal. About every three years of just after kind of the Christmas break, around February, people start wondering, you know, what's going to go on in the school and what's going to happen? I'm moving into my third contract in Leamester, so I've been very fortunate that those conversations are brief. When those things happen, people's attention aren't When those things happen, people's attention aren't focused where they need to be in the classroom. So if you take the idea with, you have a superintendent without a contract, I take that as a trickle-down, what are the principals thinking about a superintendent who might leave in three months? What are the teachers thinking about the principal who thinks, it just goes on and on and on. So it's important that we do have a superintendent with a contract. I do think having the performance standards in there, just like the performance standards that we have for teachers and pretty much any staff member that works in the school system is important as well.
Yeah, one second, Dennis, let Andy take a crack at that, then.
Okay. I voted in favor of the contract, and in terms of evaluation, the school, the school committee does an evaluation of the superintendent, a formative and a summative evaluation, it's all part of the state, it's the state law that we have to do this. So he does get evaluated, you know, people saying that he's not being evaluated and he's getting a raise without him being evaluated, he is being evaluated by us every, every year. And so, and I know that some people are thinking that the money is exorbitant, but let's look at the pool of candidates that are available. Again, that's a shrinking pool as well, for superintendents. We get a good one, we want to hold on to them. Again, again, you want to try to keep a superintendent in for a while to attract principals, great principals, that are going to say, "Well, he doesn't have a contract, I don't know that I'm going to move. I really don't think this is a good, a good move for me." Well, if the superintendent's got another three years on his contract, well, I think I'd make that move.
Okay, Dennis, just sit tight for a minute, just sit tight for a second. So Conny, which is it? He's saying he's evaluated, and you're saying...
I was going to say the exact same thing. We evaluate the superintendent every single year. It happens, this, it's been led by the mayor, the last, since Mayor Kennedy came into place. Prior to that, it was run through the personnel subcommittee, so, and that's mandated by the state, we're not, you know, that's our job, we have to evaluate the superintendent. My point was that the raises weren't tied to specific standards of achievement. Like, in the past, we've had contracts that built in, you know, a certain accomplishment had to be made, a certain level of reducing absenteeism by a certain percentage. We've had superintendents that let us build that into their contracts, that were tied to raises and to, in some cases, bonuses. But, so that the straight evaluation happens every, every year, but it isn't tied in the same way to the actual performance standards and goals as it has been in the past. So that's, I misspoke on that one, because we absolutely evaluate every single...
Andy, does she have a point?
Oh, no, she's absolutely right. I mean, we, we do these things every year, we evaluate him. But, but in terms of tying raises to that, we did not do that.
Dennis?
What I was going to say is, the superintendent does the negotiations to the assistant or the deputy assistant, I don't know, there's a whole bunch of them, how many assistants and deputies?
There is curriculum, finance and business, and then student support service.
Seems to be adding them, but he negotiates with them, and in their contract, it says right there, they will be evaluated. And I'm sure it's not tied into the contract price, but it's in there, saying that they will be evaluated every year. But I don't remember seeing that in the superintendent's contract. It might be, okay, the state law says you have to. The thing is, it should have been in the contract. Saying, "Listen, by the way, the same thing he's given his assistant or deputies," and that's all I'm saying, it's just, I think it should be spelt out, never mind the state law, it just should be spelt out, that's all.
All right, we'll stick with this issue just a little bit. Dennis, this next question, we'll start with you. Andy mentioned that if the principals see that the superintendent has a contract, they're, they might feel more stable in their position. Yet in the previous panel, it was pointed out that the school department has seen about 10 principals leave, plus there's been a fair number of high-profile positions that have opened up, some have been filled, some haven't, some were due to retirements, but some other, some others haven't. What do you attribute all that to? Do you think that's just the normal churn in a big-city school department, or is there some other factor at play there?
I don't know, I don't know enough of it to say if there's any other factor there, there does seem to be a lot of movement, a lot of principals. I think a few of the changes probably came from the superintendent, because the schools, there's a couple of schools that are Level III and have been stagnant there for a few years. It's, it's tough to say the personnel matter of it, whether it's superintendent's input, but I don't think the, well, I agree, a superintendent should have a contract. What I'm saying is, this one was too long, too lucrative, I think it could have been a little better. And I really don't think that has an effect on a principal. I don't, the principals got their contract, they're worried about their contract, they don't care who the superintendent is. They really, you know, they're looking at their own position and their own future. And it's just my opinion, you know, they're going to worry about themselves, and the way Lowell goes through superintendents, you know, I wouldn't, you know, there's a lot of principals that don't leave after every superintendent, you know, because like you're saying, you know, the job market's, you know, falling out, so where are we going to get them? So I really don't think that they're concerned, or I wouldn't be concerned if I was a principal. Be concerned with doing my job and bringing my school up to the best it can be.
Tim?
Well, I think it is an important fact, I mean, I'll disagree a little bit with Dennis, I know it's, when I've gone and gone to a different community, you know, it's like when you meet with a teacher and you're interviewing a teacher, it's a two-way street. Same thing, if I'm meeting with a superintendent and, you know, I feel like the fit just isn't right, and I have a good job where I am, maybe I don't want to leave and maybe I want to stay where I am. So I think it's a factor, but I also understand what Dennis is saying, too, in terms of, if you're, if you're doing your job, and you're doing a good job and doing right by your kids and by your parents, you can do that with any superintendent. But I think when you're trying to attract new ones, I know when I first went into Leamester, there was an interim, and it was important for me that I met the new superintendent before I signed the dotted line of where I was going.
Fair enough. So I think we're, we'll start with you on this question. We talked a little earlier tonight about raises for the superintendent, yet there was a $600,000 budget shortfall that was recently highlighted. There's also been some raises for some other personnel that were mentioned during the first panel. How concerned are you about the finances in the school department? Do you think there's a real crisis there? Or do you think that this is some type of manufactured issue, as Mr. Nutter mentioned, that there's something due to the budgeting? What do you think's going on there, and how concerned are you?
Well, the school department made a decision regarding that $600,000, so I don't think that they would be in a crisis now. Where I would be concerned about is, I'm a career educator, I've been a school administrator for 15 years, I've never dealt with budget cuts regarding staff members after July 1st. So I don't see that as, you know, as a crisis, but I'm concerned about the process moving forward. I'm trying to think of that role as a principal, you're trying to, planning to hire for a teacher, then all of a sudden, that position isn't there. That was concerning, I hope that some, that it doesn't happen in the future, as I'm sure everyone wants to adhere to best budgeting practices. But it's tough to pass a budget and then do more cuts.
If you got elected to the school, school committee, and if you were forced to make more budget cuts, where do you think you'd look to make those cuts?
I think anytime in terms of being an educator, when you first start looking at those cuts, you want to look as far away from the classroom as possible. I know if you're a teacher and your job is getting cut, and you look at central office, and they're not making cuts, and they're not, you know, proverbially tightening the belt a little bit, that's not fair. You know, if everybody has to deal with a more difficult situation, then everybody should have to deal with a more difficult situation. So I do think you start in central office and look at where you can do more, do things more efficiently before you ask a teacher to take on more kids, and ask a principal to do things more with less.
Same two questions.
Well, I completely agree with him and what he just said, in terms of, if there are going to be cuts that have to be made, you have to go well away from students before you, you even get anywhere close to the direct, the teachers who have that direct effect with kids. And so I would look at central and, and the ancillary things that go along with that, way before that. And I think this particular year, the issue we had was, we were given certain numbers, and then we were pretty confident with those numbers, and then those numbers got changed on us. And so, you know, we've, we've made adjustments to take care of that. But also, in, in what I've been working on, is, is trying to negotiate picking up more school space, so that we can keep our day students in the city, saving us millions of dollars, which would then kind of eliminate that whole underfunding from the state and so forth. So that, that's something that's really a big thing that I'm working on.
Conny?
Looking at both sides of that question, you know, first is the question around the $600,000, and, excuse me, the reality is, is that our budgets, you know, rise and fall based on the state. Every, every school committee budget gets submitted, many times it's before the state budget has been finalized. We're doing our work in March, April, in a perfect world, so it's long before the June 30th deadline that the state has set for themselves. So we were absolutely in a situation this year where the intel we were getting was that the state senate's numbers would be the ones that went through. That's been the case in the past, that the state senate, the senate side of the budget is what ultimately is approved. In this case, that additional 600 wasn't approved, so it did put us in a position where we had to make those cuts. But I mean, the reality is, is that for any member of the school committee, we certainly don't want to make cuts before, after, or during July 1st. But the reality is, is that you need to be prepared, not only for a situation like this, you need to be prepared for 9C cuts. 9C cuts can come halfway through the year, have twice the impact, and you have no time to really make those, you know, decisions in a well-considered way. So every school committee member has to be prepared by having a really comprehensive understanding of, of the district and of the budget and the way it works, to be able to make those decisions no matter what. Because we, the reality is, is we live on shifting sands. And one, you know, bad month of revenues at the state level will have an impact across the commonwealth. And that's a difficult part of the job, but it certainly is an important part of it. And I think that, you know, so that's just the reality in terms of how you have to approach these, these budget concerns, because they will pop up over and over again. And I've never been anywhere, "Gosh, in Lowell, we've had to do cuts." I swear, from the moment I got elected, right after Ed.
I don't think, so I don't think our city have crisis, because like Tim just said, you know, Conny and, and they had a meeting and they made a decision already on the $600,000. But to, to, and the same thing, I watched their, their decision where to cut the money. To be, to keep, to keep the, to, to cut far away from the classroom is, is a good thing, but also, I think moving forward, we should also look one more time. There might be, there may be a way to make it more efficient for next year round, because somehow, I also believe that in, in that classroom, or in the, inside a school building, there may be some position that needs to be merged, something like that to think about, I guess.
All right. And Dennis?
I think that, and I understand school committees put in a position, because they were given numbers in their budget, I think it was kind of the administration to take the lower number. If it was a guessing, if you're going to guess, you should guess at the lower number, in my opinion. And that's the number they should have took to avoid all this. But as far as, I don't think there's a crisis, I don't think there's any conspiracy, or I don't think there's money being hidden in different accounts. I think that money can be spent better, allocated better, it should never touch the classroom at all, unless, you know, all of a sudden, we lose 200, 300 kids in a year, then, then maybe you go to adjust something like that. I think the administration has to be looked at, I think they're top-heavy. Also, through attrition and retirement, you can consolidate some jobs. I think there may be too many jobs, each position should be looked at. We should be looking at them and saying, "Okay, can we consolidate?" Right now, they're looking to, to split one job, that's been one job for years, and now that's going to double the salary. That comes out of the bottom line of the budget. They should be looking to consolidate jobs as people are retiring. I'm not saying walk in and say, "Okay, well, the five of you are out, you're all laid off." Through attrition and retirement, people are retiring all the time, especially now. You know, just try to combine a couple of jobs and look at every job in the administration. I don't think it should ever touch the classroom.
It's eight o'clock, we have time for maybe one...
Just to wrap up the budget, and I apologize to take a second bite, but I do think it's important to note, too, that, you know, when we're looking at the budget, having accurate information is absolutely critical. And I think it's, you know, it's a challenge to, you know, you're looking at a $160-plus million budget, and I think that there are a lot of times when the information we're getting makes it really difficult to make these kinds of decisions. And I think that's something that, for the current committee, for the next committee, we need to be paying closer and closer attention to. When budget decisions are made, and when you're getting the information that doesn't really lay out all the, all the positions or all the, the different aspects of what's being spent, and when there are, you know, kind of major swings that are happening in terms of budget adjustments, I don't think we're in a, in a budget crisis, but I do think we're in an information, we're at an information deficit, and we need to be getting more information, better information, particularly around the budgets, to ensure that we are finding those efficiencies and making, again, those, those kind of well-crafted decisions in difficult times.
Sounds like a pretty sharp criticism to me. Let's move on to at least one more question. Early this year, a Lowell police officer was not criminally charged, however, he was sanctioned and punished for being too rough with a student at one of the city's middle schools. Should uniformed police officers be in the Lowell public schools, particularly in the middle schools?
Yes. They should be. I think the, again, the demographics that we deal with every day warrants some kind of police visibility, so that some students who, and we'll, let's admit it, we have some of those students, and, you know, and it's not just at the high school, they don't, they don't suddenly mushroom into problem children at the high school, they start at the middle schools. And I think it's important that our police department, and they do a really good job of this, of interacting with the kids as well. It's not just a negative presence, it's a very positive one. And so, in fact, if I could just throw this out there, if we could get more resource officers, that would be awesome. And I think Mr. Hoey would be like delirious.
Well, maybe he could be sergeant. Conny?
You know, I think our school resource officers have done extraordinary work in our district, and we're very lucky to have them. And I think the key part of, a key part of what they do is that they are a positive presence in our schools. They're showing our students, you know, a person in a uniform that is a positive force in their lives, that they're engaging with in a, in a good way. You know, and I think that there are bad actors, and that happens, and I think that we can't overlook it, and we need to respond anytime that there's something inappropriate that happens in our school. So I, you know, I absolutely agree with, with that action. But I think we can say without question, overall, the role and the, the work that our school resource officers have done in our schools have absolutely been to the positive in terms of their relationships with students, and in terms of their, their effect on kind of school decorum and, and their commitment to that.
Dominic?
Yes, I think it's good for them to be, to be roaming around in the school if needed to, and operate within the realm of the law. I believe that it is, it helps with the safety with the, with the school as well. So I don't know the situation in that particular case at that middle school, I don't know how that went to, came to play, that he was being rough to the kid, but I was, I would hope that if he's in, walking in the class, I mean, in the school hall, he should behave in a good way for the kids.
Okay. Thank you, Dominic. And Dennis?
Yes, absolutely, I think the police, the resource officers should be in the schools. If we can get them in all of them, like, besides Bob Hoey, that would be a great thing.
I hope he's watching.
Sure he is.
I bet he's down.
I would help you with that, Bob, if we could do that. Not to take anything away from the security guys, but a police officer, I think, you look at a police officer, and there's more respect to a police officer, a child will have more respect. They're better trained than the security guy, like I'm saying, not to take away from them, but they have arrest power, too. But no, I think an officer of the law is needed in, not every classroom, obviously, but as many places as we can. I think the resource officers in Lowell, I know a few of them, I think they do a great job.
Okay. And one last.
I'll keep it short. I think, I think having a school resource officer is a great asset to schools. I think it can be a shared asset, I don't think you always need one per school and is there full-time. But I know, just this morning, I was working with a couple of families and a couple of students, and my school resource officer was right there in my office, working with the families, and it was appreciated by the families. I don't know if it was truly appreciated by the young kids, but it was appreciated by the families and myself.
Thank you. Well, that time flew, folks, so it's time now for closing statements. Dennis, we'll start with you. All right, you have a minute.
One minute?
Just go down the line.
My name is Dennis Mursi, I'm a candidate for, a second-time candidate for Lowell School Committee. I still have the passion I did two years ago, I was born in Lowell, raised in Lowell. I was born in Lowell, raised in Lowell. I mean, my wife decided to stay in Lowell, I had to raise our daughter. And they finally had the time now, and I've always been involved in some kind of public service. I've been on the Cemetery Commission for 20 years. I was on the CBA board, I'm sorry, CTI Board for a few years. And I just thought that this was the right time to step up, and where I have the time, I have the passion, I'm a hard worker, I believe, and hopefully you cast one of your six votes of me, and I can show you that I think I can do a good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis Mercer. Dominic Ley.
Hi, Dominic Ley, second-time running for school committee as well. I believe that our school, I need to do a little bit better communication with the, with the community, and community need to do a little bit more communication with the school as well. And I believe that this election is very important, and I believe that a centralized location for school is important, something to, to have equal access to education for all students from every neighborhood is important. So I, I believe that if anybody out there, you voters out there, feel the same way as me, and I just humbly ask for one of your six votes.
Thank you, sir. Connie Martin.
My name is Connie Martin. I've been serving on the Lowell School Committee now. I'm completing my 18th year. During that time, I have drawn on the exceptional educational experience that I had here in the city of Lowell. Having gone to Lowell Public Schools, graduating from Lowell High School, had gotten my undergrad in English, but my, my master's at the university in education administration, had gone back for that degree specifically so I could do this job better. It's been a great deal of time and a great deal of effort to feel that I can serve in this role, have the depth of understanding of our district and our community. It's been a great honor, and I would respectfully ask for you to return me to this school committee on November 7th. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. Andy Decotto, another incumbent.
Yep. Hi, I'm Andy Decotto, and I'm running for reelection to the school committee over here. The, I have been a life...
Andy.
Over that one.
Sorry to interrupt.
Sorry. I have been a lifelong resident of Lowell. I graduated from Lowell High School, went to UMass Lowell as well, and I've been a educator all my life. I figured, once I retired, I wanted to continue to work with kids, and that's why I am a voice for the kids, and I will continue to be such. I really think that Lowell has so much to offer our kids, and I want to be a part of that. So I would appreciate one of your six votes on November 7th. I believe I'm number one on the school committee ballot, so...
How did you manage that?
It's alphabetical. I thank my mom and dad for that one. Thank you.
And challenger, Tim Blake.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Campanini, Mr. Scott, and the Lowell Sun for hosting this